This is the agenda of the regular board meeting, Burnham, Lake County, Illinois. Water trustee, and the day of January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. At this time, we trust that Call the Roland Adams.
It was achieved whatever you want to try.
There we are, trustee Cap present, trustee Bonner, trustee Garcia, trustee Greer, trustee Richardson, trustee Clayber.
The president could be standing, the president, ladies and gentlemen.
In which I would just say, like, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, and the wisdom of liberty and justice for all.
Any approval or corrections of the minutes that the board leaves in January twelve, twenty-twenty? There are no corrections to be made to the minutes, I will have a motion to approve the minutes of January twelve, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
You have a motion to approve our trustee cap, and the second, please, for second. Except by trustee Clayber.
Trustee Cap, yes, trustee Bonner. Trustee Garcia. Trustee Greer. Trustee Richardson. Trustee Clayber.
Motion has been approved for January twelve, twenty-twenty-one. Before we open the meeting to the public, if you have a statement to make, if you have a statement to make, then you stand up and make your statement to the board. We will entertain you. So at this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public. I'll make a motion to open the meeting to the public. Your motion, and your vote by trustee Clayber, could we have a second, please?
Second.
Second, with trustee Richardson.
Trustee Cap, yes, trustee Bonner. Trustee Garcia. Trustee Greer. Trustee Richardson. Trustee Clayber.
Your motion has been approved, the public comments will be started here.
Hi, my name is Carol, manager of the Riverpoint, Mobile Park in Burnham. I have a few questions. Do we have a village inspector? Who is it?
Inspector in regards to?
Who?
Is it building inspector? What kind of inspector?
The village had an inspector at one time, by the name of?
We have quite a few.
John Reedus?
Be more specific, what kind of inspector?
Inspector that would go around and inspect property.
Okay, that would be?
And problems on the property. And do we have a code enforcer?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there any certain way that we get in touch with those two people?
Quickly, a message to the office?
The, um, they never get returned, so. Um, another thing I have, um, have you gotten a schedule yet on when the sewers are going to be cleaned? Anybody?
Well, take the script, now go ahead.
I got hold of the EPA. EPA states that sewers are supposed to be cleaned out every eighteen to twenty-two months. The village of Burnham has not cleaned out the sewers in at least thirty years. We have constant sewer backups in the park, and I'm sure other residents in the village are having the same problem, as Calumet City Plumbing out quite a bit. I had, we have an overflow tank in the park. That overflow tank takes everything from the park into the overflow, which goes to the city. I had four plumbing companies out in December. The overflow, for the third time in four years, has been filled to the top because there's a blockage at the city sewer. It costs a thousand dollars to have that overflow tank vacuumed out. I don't feel that our landlord should be responsible for that full thousand dollars to vacuuming that overflow out when it was partially the village's fault. So that's why I want to know if there's a schedule set up yet for these sewers to get cleaned. And mayor, you were in my park, our park. You've seen the filth and the smell that the landlord let me live in for eighteen days with crap floating up on the ground on both sides of my yard because the sewer lines underneath were broke, and he was told that by three different plumbing companies. You've seen it, you came out to the park and seen it, and still nothing was done until the lady that lived next door to me who had to move out of her home for ten days because the sewer gas was so bad, she could not breathe, ended up in the hospital, and is still in the hospital. She called the Hammond Times, and you alerted Bill, the landlord, that the Hammond Times was going to be out there that day. And only because of that, eight o'clock that next morning, I had plumbers out at my place fixing my sewer lines, which are the landlord's responsibility after he lied to you and told you that it was in our contract that it was our responsibility. Uncalled for, you are supposed to be a mayor for the entire village, not just the west side. You ignore the east side completely. Uncalled for. Uh, what else did I have for the east side? You got a junkyard. A junkyard on a residential property. How is that possible?
Where's the actual address, what's the address, where you got?
His best friend. Right on one hundred and thirty-eighth, right across the street from the water department.
Twenty-eight twelve.
Twenty-eight twelve. Junkyard on a residential property. You really think that's good for the village? And at the last meeting that I was at, we discussed that corner of Chippewa and Burnham, the stop sign. And I had one of your police officers tell me to my face, and I quote, "There is no law on the books about parking by stop signs." Well, guess what, there is. Stop signs should be twenty feet from the corner, no parking thirty feet beyond that stop sign. There is going to be a deadly accident at that corner, and especially now with the snow. And what do they do? They take a little tiny sign and they screw it onto the stop sign, saying no parking, and yet they're still parking all the way beyond the stop sign there. I think it's time that the village people get a hold of their governor, their senator. The Hammond Times is now covering all stories through this part of Illinois. I've got the number to the gentleman that will do the stories, if you have a problem, you need to call him. We need to get the village in the paper, let people see how we're really living. Thank you.
Another public comment.
I'd like to talk, my name's Tom Cahill, living at, say, Riverpoint Mobile community. My problem is with Bill Jasmine also. You were there, mayor, about five years ago, if you remember, with Carol, Bill, myself, and yourself. It wouldn't stand out in your mind, but it stands out in mine. My electrical pole's about to fall over, so we had brought you back there just to show it, and Bill was there, and you told Bill that day, get that thing fixed. Five years later, he hasn't touched it. You know what he did? He ratchet strapped it. Now, how can that not be a code violation? Which brings me to my next question. Why is this man not getting hit with code violations? I don't understand, if someone goes in my yard and sees an electrical pole that carries maybe, I don't know, two-twenty volts at least, held up by a ratchet strap, and for five years that's been going on, and not fixed correctly, they actually came in and put a new pole in, so now they just have to attach it to the new pole, but they won't even go that far, so now winters come again, snow's going to fall on that, that could fall, and all they have to do is attach it to the new pole, which I was promised they would do that, you know, not necessarily by the mayor, but by the owner of the park, Bill Jasmine, who also sewage problems, she lives across the street from me, I also had to smell that for eighteen days. I don't believe anybody in this whole place would live for eighteen days with sewage in there underneath their house. I believe they would call the next day, they would have it repaired, and especially if you were renting that property, is what we're doing, we're renting the property, we own the trailer, but we rent the property, so if you were renting that property and that sewage was no longer working for eighteen days, come on, I mean, this guy should, he should have been fined, 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 and then fined again. Now we have another one, same thing, ten days. Mayor, same thing, sewage pouring out both sides of your house, tried to get Bill to help her, it's been ten days. It's not even me that it's happening to, but I live there, and if it'll happen to them, it'll be me next. And we all live in a small community there, and mayor, I think you would agree, or anybody else who's gone in that trailer park. In the last five years, the Carol's been, uh, manager, totally changed that park, it used to be half-filled. That's the other point I wanted to bring up, he cannot say that money is not coming in. It used, I've lived there sixteen years, when Mark and Jenny used to own the place. He used to be half-filled, now he's completely filled besides two trailers that he has to have be refilled. So he's taken in double the money, minimum double the money, and he has made none of the repairs, which will lead to him, and he needs to tell you about that, because that's another ridiculous, no repairs.
Now the public comment.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Christina Martinez, and I recently moved to trailer nineteen, and I'm here to support my neighbors, even though I'm new to the community, and I can attest that Carol was experiencing very bad odor, every time you would pass by there, it was like totally unlivable, I'm surprised she lasted that long. My whole thing is exactly what, um, Bill just said, it's just waiting for it to happen to me, right? If, if, if someone else doesn't take care of the situation, and they take that long to handle a situation, it's just a matter of time. So it happened two doors down, now it's happening in back with me, so, two things, we need actionable items from the, the city on what they're going to do, and then also we need accountability, if Carol calls up to the building inspector and she doesn't get a call back, that's something to be concerned about. Where's the accountability when you leave a message for somebody, for somebody to call you back? That should be a concern as well.
Do you know the public comment?
And by the way, the lady that's having the sewer problem right now? She's been without a toilet for seven days.
Do they know the public comment?
Yes, sir, uh, my name's Bill Campbell, and I live at Riverpoint, uh, trailer number eight. I'm in that role where they have the, um, they had made a promise to the residents that we're going to remove these old light poles, they're electric poles, they hold up the electric lines. Well, my pole got hit by lightning about two years ago, and it's kind of like dangling right now, and the only thing that's holding it up is this old cable that they tied to it and put it onto an old dead tree, well, that dead tree broke, and now the, the pole is just going back and forth, and that's a high-power line, and, uh...
The date that he promised.
Oh, right, that date was, uh, like six years ago, it was in May, about twenty fifteen.
May thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. We are currently working with an electrician to make some upgrades to the power lines and power poles in the park. We will be straightening and replacing about half a dozen poles and upgrading services to lots five through ten, which is exactly what he's talking about.
Well, anyway, what happened was that that, that meter actually caught on fire, and it burnt that pole, but it's still there, they put a new meter in there, but still the same thing is going on right there. So I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Do they know the public comment?
Yes, um, mayor, you gave me a phone call, like, January second, the third or so, and told me happy new year, and I returned your call, and the only thing that I requested out of you is to start talking with us and speaking, carrying back and forth with us in the meetings, that's all I asked, so maybe this will be a start of that. Um, mayor, I understand you've been telling people, and you said it yourself here, that burning is doing better, and one lady, I understand, you told her Burnham's never been better than it is now, and also you have a January surprise, you're shaking your head now, so you agree with that, good. Well, mayor, I, I asked you, better than what? Better than what? Um, any mayor's report card, I mean, any mayor, is the audit. An audit, it tells how good you've been doing and how bad you've been doing, and basically, you and trustee Cap there, he's the finance chairman, I, uh, I text trustee Cap the, uh, the morning after the last meeting where you guys approved the audit, and if any number, I would expect any one of you guys on the, uh, finance committee to know, it would be, what's our deficit? I don't expect you to know the whole thing, but where the heck are we since we've been in deficit for the last three, four years that I know of, okay? What do I get out of you, John? You said we're doing better, and you don't have the audit with you.
Right, I did not have it in six.
Well, John, John, you're a finance chairman, if there's one number I expect out of you, I expected more out of you, I'll put it to you that way, okay? Having said all that, for those of you who don't know, we had a six million dollar debt in eighteen, but nineteen, it did go down, five point seven. That was good, it means we're making progress for rates, our water rates and all. This last audit, we're now six point three million in debt. We lost seven hundred and twenty grand from six, mayor, it's the audit you're arguing with again, you're shaking your head no. I'm just wondering, how the heck did we lose that money while you've been doubling our rates, and the surtax has brought in about three or four hundred grand in three years? I'm simply asking why, and I also say, I've been asking you guys for the last three years about our debt, the only thing I've come in here for is about our money. That's the only thing I've ever asked about is financial questions. I asked trustee Garcia, probably two, three years ago, financial question, she referred me to you, so I stopped, I, I let her go. Trustee Caps told me the same, you told me the same, trustee Greer and Richardson, you guys were both on the finance committee, I figured maybe I'll get something out of you like two years ago. You referred me to a website, I asked for one number. I'm simply asking, how the heck do we get there, and why is our deficit such a secret to the public? I was wondering if you can comment on that tonight. My final thing is, you raised our water rate specifically to pay for the water meters, we were told that for a year, year and a half, it's written on the ordinance that way. I filed it for you recently, and I asked, how much do we currently owe to Cal City Plumbing for our meters? And how much, how much have we paid, and how much do we owe? It was like a legal mumble jumble answer, I talked to attorney, the attorney couldn't even understand it. Either you don't want to answer us, or you won't answer us. I'm wondering, why don't we know about how much we owe Cal City Plumbing for that? Because I was hoping that once the meters are paid off, at that, at some point, do our rates go back down again, or what? Because that's the only reason it went up, according to you guys. That's all I have for you.
Oh, by the way, that is December twenty-twenty, we are now ten million in debt.
Can I ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public? Anyone else, if you checked, make sure, nobody else? I'd ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Wow.
Would you like to close the meeting to the public? We have a second.
The role of trustee Cap, yes, trustee Bonner. Trustee Garcia. Trustee Greer. Trustee Richardson. Trustee Clayber.
I think the meeting is not closed to the public. Uh, I mean, concerning the issue that the trailer park, now, it has been to my understanding, and it is to my understanding tonight, that there is a special agreement that's in your, uh, that's in your lease, and the trailer, the trailer actually belongs to the individual, like this gentleman here said, and, and the lines, that's in the trailer park, belongs to the owner.
It's very simple.
It's not concerning, it literally gets out to the village, the language, and where it connects it.
Yeah.
And, and I know we have done several work over there, and a lot of time you have time of your own, a lot of time, and, um, so, I helped the attorney here on the phone, so I'm like, I'm going to defer the legal opinion to him, but to my understanding, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, to my understanding, I don't think we can go on private property and just make people.
Could I, could I address that?
Yeah, me too.
No, but you already had your comment, so, attorney, would you, um?
Yeah, but you just, you just stated a statement that I don't believe is true. You go on people's private property all the time to it.
A home is a private.
A home is a private property, and you go on there to make sure their code enforcement is valid.
I'm going to let the attorney see if he can answer the question first, and then.
So in other words, Bill gets away with murder. Good.
I mean, the question is, on the trailer park, so, I'm, I'm, is it to your understanding that, um, I know if there's a serious violation, that, that we can issue a citation, but I don't think that we have the same authority.
Excuse me.
If I'm incorrect, would you?
Okay, yeah, they can't talk on this, I understand. Oh, it's talking to the lawyer. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if I understand what the issue is. There's a violation between, or some failure on the part of the landlord to do something and take care of it, and it's a civil matter between the landlord and the tenant.
Right, that was to my understanding, right, that was to my understanding. So.
But if there's some form of, 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 uh, violation occurring, right, uh, that can be referred to the police department for review, or for a building inspector for review, to see if a code violation has occurred, and a citation could be issued.
Plenty of them.
As if there may be, if I understand the facts correctly, forgive me if I don't, but it seems as if there's some problem with whatever is going on there between the landlord and the tenant.
Eddie, let's collect the money and that.
I don't know what it's, what it's about, really, to tell you the truth, I, I couldn't understand everything that was being said because I, the people don't have a microphone where I can hear them.
Okay, and, 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 by the way, Mr. Medina, Rich Medina.
Private issue between the landlord and the tenant.
Yeah, private issue, and Medina, that has been his position all along, so, um, so I'm gonna, I will instruct the police, I'll instruct the building commissioner, I'll instruct the code enforcer to make an assessment of the situation here, if there's something legally that we can do, that I have been told in the past we could not do, then we will do it. And if, and, and certainly, if we can do something to help the situation out there, then we will do it, we will do it, you've got my word on it. We'll check it out.
I appreciate that.
Here, let me talk to Stanley, Stanley, there was two issues, one was sewer, and the other was electric poles. Those were the two that you couldn't understand. So they're having some sewer backups, and then some electric poles on the property that need to be replaced.
Yeah, and I did see the sewer, uh, more than once, I did go in and I talked to Miss Carol a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, I went in and went on, so that did happen, so that is a thing.
So would you comment, comment, wouldn't it be?
Comment does not feed us. Comment only feeds to the street. Bill switched it over to A and E.
So maybe that's a problem too.
I can answer one question on the sewers, we are in process, we do have a bid and proposal to have the sewers cleaned on the east side, and they're having some weather issues, so it's pending temperatures above freezing. I mean, we have been cleaning them as we need to periodically, but there's a big project coming out really soon where we clean them all, so, within weeks or months.
Mayor, I would appreciate any help you could give us over at the park, because it's the little things that are really tearing us apart, that he's not even addressing, you know what I mean? Anything you could do, that would be great.
I have a question, uh, you said the overflow tank, it was repaired, uh?
There was nothing wrong with the overflow tank, it was blocked at the city sewer. So the Calumet City Plumbing had to come in there with a big machine that destroys the property because it's so heavy, and vacuum it out, suck it out, so that all three ports that are inside that overflow can now flow freely, once they got the city blockings cleared. And it was blocked at the street.
Okay, now let me say this also now, so, I'm going to be on the record for saying this, um, and so, and then once I look into this, and I give the department head the authority to do what we can legally do, there's some trailers and things down there that, I mean, that the yards need cleaned up, so they will be, they'll be definite as well, so all that stuff.
That's great.
I mean, they'll, I could clean that up as well.
That's great.
I just want you to know, so.
That's fine.
Once we start, we start doing that, I don't want people to feel we're thinking of.
Here's the deal, I think you're not talking to us, because we keep our places nice.
We keep our places nice and clean.
But you're right, but we've been trying very hard, I know she has, and I, you know, as a tenant there, we've been trying real hard to, uh...
We've got the trailer painted, we've got the yards cleaned up.
Looks a lot better, Bill, Bill threw a couple of dollars into it. Fence out front, you know, that didn't look nice, you know, just throw a couple of dollars back into it, you know?
We're paying to help.
Right, but you can't force him to do that, I can understand that, but you'd understand what I'm saying. Couple of dollars into the place. I mean, a business is money, oh, yeah, and I know I'm not allowed to bring it up, but he also opened a second business in this, uh, establishment also, a laundromat.
Yeah.
If you hang a shingle, aren't you a laundromat now?
It says laundromat.
Now, it used to be just for the use of the trailer park, you understand, and we paid for, um, community water. Then, when he owns it now, he went and had a professional sign made up saying laundromat.
Riverpoint Laundromat.
And he collects the quarters out of there, so he likes collecting the money out, but he don't like paying the money in. And I think that's a second business inside that first business, to tell you the truth, that might be a problem.
Outsiders coming in to use the laundromat?
The whole village uses it.
Yes. I think that, that might be another problem, that you're running, he's literally running, and we're paying for it.
And we're paying for it, and...
You know, I mean, I don't know if you can look into it, I don't know, but we want to let you know, you know?
Because it is a separate building, and it is a laundromat.
And it is in the contract that it was for just us.
You would think that that laundromat would have water meters on it to regulate the waters, correct? None, we're paying for it.
No, but we're going to solve all that because the people who care are going to put a water meter on their own trailer, and then I'll know exactly how many gallons I use, and then I'll pay the village rate, because he can't make a profit on utilities. So I'll have a meter, and then I will know exactly how many gallons I use, and then I will tell him what I owe him, and then, if not, we have a problem, you know?
That might be a question with the attorney, to see if they need a business license to operate that laundromat.
Yeah, oh, it's just something I'm wondering about, because once he hung that shingle, I consider it a second business.
And that sign has been hanging now for four years.
You know, and he's doing it to bring in business, you know, to bring in more quarters, you know?
Yeah, we'll have to talk with the attorney to see if he needs a business.
Just letting you know, yeah, because I don't think, yeah, that, that might be, uh...
And why should we be paying for water if the whole village is using it?
Right, and that's why we are putting meters on our own places, but until then, we're paying for that water, which, you know?
And Mr., um, Mr. Hudrick, uh, you was talking about the, uh, about the deficit again, um, I mean, the deficit that you were speaking of, it is pertaining to the Burnham Police Pension Fund?
It's a total net position on the audit.
I understand that. And the, and the police department is part of the village, but that is not in the daily village's finances, of, of the operation of, of the village, it's not part of the cooperative budget. I mean, that is the police pension fund, which is a separate entity.
Mayor, the auditor two years ago said it was part of it.
See, if you let...
She said that.
I can't get along, because he...
It's part of it.
I mean, because you want to accept anything that I tell you, anything that we say, or you always arguing against.
What does the total net position state on the audit, what does that mean?
The pension shows up on the audit, yes, you are correct.
But that's part of Burnham.
Right.
So that puts us in debt.
Right.
We still have to pay back the pension, right?
Yes, I mean, the benefit wouldn't have to pay it back, but here's the thing, I'm going to say this, we're going to move on.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm trying to discuss it.
We're going to move on, um, I mean, right now, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that we can do about the pension debt, because in order, in order for the village of Burnham, I mean, to pay that debt off, to start paying it off, then we probably would have to triple, I mean, everybody's property taxes are in Burnham, and we are not going to do that.
Are you telling me our debt might be ten or fifteen million now if you didn't double our rates?
It's ten right now.
You doubled our rate, no, I don't understand how it went up.
I mean, the rent isn't having anything to do with it.
It went up because they added the pension into the audit, remember, we talked about that a couple of years ago.
They said the pension was in back of the audit. They said the pension was in back of the audit up until like three years ago. Now it's up front where we can see it, but it's always been part of the audit. You guys are deceiving me.
It showed up on the audit, but it didn't show up on that bottom line.
It's always been part of the total net position.
Always been, but it wasn't, didn't show up.
The total net position is the checkbook balance for Burnham, correct?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
No, I'm not going to say yes.
Why not? You're on video here, John. Explain to the village, explain to the residents.
Debt is the pension fund.
I'm talking about our total balance for our checkbook.
Right, so we're telling you that the debt comes from the pension fund.
Because you took out of it for so many years.
No.
The village did not take.
Or you haven't put into it. How's that?
No, we have, we have contributed to the pension fund.
Pardon me?
I mean, you've been in Burnham fifty eight years, but you don't know what's going on. Um.
I know enough to know we're six million dollars in debt, sir. I didn't do that.
Wait a minute. I mean, the thing is, is that when I got on the board in two thousand one, which was twenty years ago, the village of Burnham was only putting fifty thousand dollars per year into the pension fund. And the amount of money you put into the pension fund is not necessarily the amount that you're going to collect. Because a lot of people's appeal, their taxes, it may take a year and a half for that money to come back.
Mm-hmm.
And so since I've been mayor, uh, we have increased it significantly. And so now we probably, I don't know the exact figure, but I know about four hundred thousand dollars. And for years we appropriate, I mean, then we let it, I mean, for the pension, for the pension fund.
See, when I come in here, I'm being totally fair with you.
I mean, but it's going to take.
Mayor, when you started in oh five, you started out with eight hundred one thousand dollar surplus. You gave that to me. You gave me the audit.
It's going to take a long time for that action to correct itself. And now that the pension.
How long are you going to have then?
Pension fund has been taken over by the state in the actual areas. And in time, I hope there was some good investment in stuff that the fund will begin to.
You're thinking the state's going to be bailing out all the cities and building this, uh, put themselves in debt?
I mean, every city, every city in the, the region, I mean, has a pension debt.
No, I understand. It's not just Burnham. I don't, I understand that. But the state's taking you all out of debt.
Okay.
But we're, but we're still screwed.
We're going to move on. Um.
Do you have anything else? Still your, your dead work?
Okay, um, well, I mean, our sidewalk program is going to resume in a couple of months. Uh, we have to stop Larry Shev because of the COVID. And so I know we would be spending at least a hundred thousand dollars to make sidewalk repairs and we do have some to make up. Down a hundred thirty eighth street as well. And the things that we do, someone has said that I don't, that I neglect the east side. And whatever I try to do on one side of town, we do the same thing on the other. And I can, and I can recite several things that we've done on the east side as well as the west side and anywhere else. And so there, no one is right mind, I mean, could have said that, I mean, that I, I neglect the east side. That's not true. But I can prove otherwise. And a couple of our programs that we working on, they're not complete yet, and therefore we're not going to announce them at this time. But we do have some very, very positive things on the agenda for Burnham. In two thousand twenty, I mean, was the best year for the village of Burnham, probably in a hundred and twelfth year history. In a hundred and twelve years.
What made it so special?
I would know, and I would know because I got information.
What did make it special?
Yeah, what did make it special?
Mayor, defend yourself.
Um, no matter what I say, you're not going to accept it anyway.
I'm listening.
I'm listening.
Okay, nevermind.
Okay.
Um, the clerk is asking this evening, public education, health, welfare, trustee Greer?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The benefits of getting a COVID nineteen vaccine, safety is a priority. None of the COVID nineteen vaccines contain the live virus that causes the COVID nineteen. It's first read that getting the COVID nineteen vaccine may also help keep you from getting seriously ill, even if you do not get COVID nineteen. Getting vaccinated yourself may protect other people around you. COVID nineteen vaccination is a safer way to build protection. COVID nineteen vaccinations will be an important tool to help stop the pandemic. Wearing your mask and social distancing help reduce your chance of being exposed to the virus or spreading it to others. These measures are not enough. The vaccine will work with your immune system, so it will be ready to fight the virus if you are exposed. The question is asked, when will it be my turn to get the COVID nineteen vaccine? Each state has its own plan for deciding which group of people will be vaccinated first. You can contact your state health department for more information. The goal is for everyone to be able to get the COVID nineteen vaccination easily as soon as all large quantities are available. And if you watch the news, they're uh, they're been running out of vaccine, the vaccination. As the vaccine supply increases, more group will be added to receive the vaccination. So this is some information that was um, from the Center for Disease Control. And these are, I'm sure, some uh, questions that people may have had. But again, I I do want to express that none of the COVID nineteen vaccine contains the live virus that causes COVID nineteen. Because you hear so many um, different statements about it, so this is just some information I thought that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Yeah, I think a lot of people are afraid of that.
Yes, absolutely.
And trustee Greer, then I'd like to add to your report that the village of, I mean, the village of Robbins, I mean, has a site that's set up at a hundred and thirty fourth and uh, Western and uh.
Four, four, thank you. Four, thanks.
And Fort Hester, the second one, then you have to call and make your appointment. You have to make an appointment. You can't just go.
And to me, they called today and they got, and they got a appointment for Monday.
Also, the, the.
Yes, they just opened today.
And we're going to try, we can't promise anything, but we'll try to see if we can get them to come here. We just, I don't know if we can do it now, but we're going to make the effort, so we're going to reach out to them. But it's probably going to be a little while, you know, for that to happen once we get them just to be just killed the pest out.
I think trustee Greer, that was all she got?
Yes.
Um, from Western Building, trustee Clayber? Good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works was out this morning, uh, with the snow plowing the streets and everything. And I'll, I'll also be out, it's going to snow tonight and tomorrow, so we'll be out. Hopefully they got down all of the streets and uh, all the residents are satisfied with uh, the results. Also, uh, I want to thank everyone and uh, it was a nice turnout for the COVID nineteen testing at the senior center. And uh, I took the test and uh, it was nice. The results came back and I was proud that I was able to do it. And also thanks to the residents for uh, doing your part in uh, keeping your properties clean, shoveling the snow and uh, for your house and things like that. It makes a big difference. And uh, also, the trucks are, the trucks are up and running, all of the uh, equipment, uh, when the equipment is uh, up and running, is uh, ready to go. And also we use calcium chloride for the uh, mixed with rock salt. Calcium chloride, the sum of calcium chloride, it's an effective de-icer, working at temperatures below most competing products. And it is significant, significantly more effective than sodium chloride because of its ability to extract moisture from its surroundings and to cause ecstatic or heat generating reactions. Also mixed with traditional rock salt is what we do. Calcium chloride greatly improves the effectiveness of the de-icing material. So what it does after they plow the snow, they go back with the calcium chloride, excuse me, calcium chloride mixed with rock salt and it forms a bond between the concrete. So like tomorrow, when they go out and uh, plow the streets, you won't have to use as much salt to uh, keep the streets clean. So it does save money in the long run. And that's all I have.
I think trustee Clayber, your report on the resolution plan, trustee Garcia?
I don't know.
I think trustee Garcia, finance trustee Cap?
Yeah, I have two items. First one is discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payment of the bills.
I'm going to call my trustee Cap and start by.
I said.
You said, wrong.
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee, let me go on there. Let's, trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes. Motion to pass, trustee?
Second item is discussion of consideration of and taking action on authorizing a credit of a hundred and seventy-five dollars to be, be applied to all active water meter accounts. This allocation was received to the local government from the Cook County Cares Relief Fund. Any questions from anyone?
Can we ask how much we got for the Cares Act for that water we wrote for that?
No, it's closed, if ever not. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the um.
Well, I should make the motion. I'll make the motion to uh, to authorize the credit of a hundred and seventy-five dollars to be applied to all active water meter accounts. This allocation was received to the local government from the Cook County Cares Relief Fund.
Yeah, motion, I'm calling my trustee Cap. Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call. Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
And trustee Clayber?
Thank you, motion cap. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Public utility, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
There's an agency by the name of Respond now located in uh, Chicago Heights that help residents or just, you know, anyone that's in need of help with your rent or other items due to the uh, COVID. There's a number, it's seven oh eight, seven five five, four three five seven. They're open on Wednesdays at ten thirty. You can call them. Everything is done through email and phone. And they will match you up with uh, agencies that are, have funds to assist. So if you know anyone that needs rental assistance, they can, you can go with agencies that can help you. Or if you need tires for your car, so you reach out to them and they will match you up with agencies that actually, you know, whatever your needs might be.
And so both of them are here, seven oh eight?
Yes, seven oh eight, seven five five, four three five seven. And also, common with Edison is still um, giving out assistance through uh, their comed dot com slash care program. And their number is eight eight eight, eight zero, eight zero six care. That's eight eight eight, eight zero six care, C A R E. That's it, I mean, there.
Okay, thank you, trustee Richardson, for the report. Park of Resurrection, trustee Bonner?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Trustee Bonner? And in precinct, tech, education, communication, memorial, and rest management. I'll ask for a moment of silence, uh, from Mr. Wees, who passed away a couple of days ago from uh, from a hundred forty-four from Calhoun. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Make the motion to adjourn. The motion, I'll call my trustee Clayber. Can we have a second to adjourn?
Sure.
Start with trustee Richardson, trustee Clayber.
Trustee Cap, yes. Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Thank you.